And a salute to our flag. Let's pray together. Thank you, Lord, so much for this beautiful day that you've given us. Thank you for the city of Durant. Thank you for the staff that worked so hard to make this a better place. It's a great day to be in Durant, Lord, and that blessing comes from you. We're so thankful for that. I pray a special blessing on each person and each family that's represented here, Lord. I pray that you would bless the city, the leadership, the city council, the work that we do. Lord, help us to make good decisions, to take good steps in the direction that you would have us to, to make this a better city, a better community, and a better place. Thank you, Lord, most of all, for Jesus, who's our Savior. In His name we pray, amen. If you would, please salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Miller?
Here.
Councilmember Shear?
Here.
Councilmember Fuller is absent. Vice Mayor Simuleski?
Mayor Tucker?
Here.
Here. At this time, would I, I would ask if the council would please join me down front along with the ownership and the staff of the Law Street Brewery for a proclamation. All right. All right, we like this. Okay, here we go. It'll be all right. It'll be fine. So this is a proclamation recognizing the Law Street Brewing Company, the winners of the 2025 World Beer Cup Gold Award. Congratulations for that. That deserves a round of applause myself. So, so here's the proclamation. Whereas the 2025 World Beer Cup is the world's most prestigious professional beer and cider competition, and whereas a panel of 256 judges from 37 countries methodically evaluated 8,375 entries from 1,761 breweries and cideries across 49 nations, and whereas the World Beer Cup competition continues to showcase the global industry's dedication to innovative craftsmanship, diverse flavors, technical excellence, and whereas World Cup Beer, World Beer Cup Award winners have helped set the standard for excellence in their craft, inspiring that innovation and fostering healthy competition within the industry. Whereas, Law Street Brewing Company was crowned best in the Scottish-style ale category for their Stony Kirk Scottish Ale. Now, therefore, I, Martin Tucker, Mayor of the City of Durant, Oklahoma, do hereby recognize and congratulate the Law Street Brewing Company on receiving the 2025 World Beer Cup Gold Award.
Very quickly. This is all family to us. We are so honored to be able to make great beer right here in Durant, Oklahoma. But I will tell you right now, it wouldn't be possible, if it wouldn't, for some really great people on city staff. Public works, everybody else that helped us get up and running, thank you, because it was a big effort and finally got all our permitting done, which was not as arduous as some would think. So, we really look at this as a partnership with the city of Durant, and we now have world-class beer here, and it's certified. So, thank you all. Thank you all very much.
That was good. I enjoyed that. It's good to bring things that are celebratory in nature, and just point of privilege, I want to say that today I met with the fifth grade class of the Durant Public School along with Kathy Moore, our economic developer, and those kids are wonderful. They petitioned the city, this is great, and I'm sure you'll hear about it later, they petitioned the city for a chicken restaurant. They want some fried chicken. They want a particular brand or two. They said between two brands, we don't care. But we just loved the engagement and their attitude and their bright kids, and they asked great questions, and we really enjoyed that. So, it's a great day today. So, on to our order of business. We'll begin with the consent agenda. We have several items in the consent agenda. Mostly meeting minutes. We have the regular meeting minutes of April the 8th. We have the special meeting minutes of April the 14th, special meeting minutes of May the 5th, and we also have approval, consideration of approval of a budget supplement, which is BA 25-10. Do I have any comments, anything need to be pulled from the consent agenda for separate consideration? Do I hear a motion for the consent agenda then?
Motion to approve all consent items.
A second.
We have a motion and a second to approve all the consent items, which is under order of business number one. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Shear?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simuleski?
Yes.
Mayor Tucker?
Yes. There were no items removed, which is number two. So, we're on to agenda number three, information items. First is the March 2025 financial reports and the April 2025 sales tax reports. Is Ann Chin here tonight to present those?
She's in training.
She's in training. So, y'all are stuck with me for what little I know. We have the, we can pull the documents up on the screen for those watching at home and here in the audience, and I can show you that. Let me find the financial statement first. You can tell I was counting on her doing this, right? So, for the general fund, through 75% of the year, nine months of the year, we've completed. General fund, total revenues, $16.8 million, which is 81% of the budget. 75% of the budget would be on track, so we're slightly ahead of budget there. Use of fund balance down below that shows a total revenue and other financing sources of $21,412,000, which is 71% of budgeted revenue, so it's a little bit behind after you consider that use of fund balance. Moving on down to operating expenditures, through, through March was $20,508,000, which is 64.7% of budget. Again, about a 10% under budget, which is a good positive variance. Transfers out were $903,714, a little bit higher than budget, but of course, part of that is the insurance fund, which skews that number because 100% of it goes out immediately each year. So, that brings the total at 21,412, which is where we stand. On the capital improvement fund, this is again, just what was appropriated versus what's been spent so far this year. Transfers in, $46,649,000 with a balanced carry forward of $3.1 million for a total revenue of $52.9 million. And then below, you can see the expenses so far. Total expenses internally, $15.6 million, and then you can see the expenses for the Oklahoma Water Resource Board and the wastewater treatment plan improvements to reach that total that balances at $15.9 million. Then, if we go next to the Durant City Utilities Authority Fund, you can see that revenues through March, $15,388,000 against operating expenses of $11,98,000 and $4.2 million, $4.3 million in transfer expenses, which then balances out. So, that's the financials or the review of the sub-ledger accounts. I want to talk about our sales tax then for April. Total received by the city is $1,729,000 for April. Of that, 1% went to the capital fund, which is $395,000. 2% to the general operating funds, $790,560. A quarter cent for economic development, which is $98,820. A half cent for the infrastructure, which is $197,000, and then five eighths of a cent to the Durant Independent School District for $247,000. So, pretty good month in tax collections. Then, Ann has, here a report of the tenure history. This is just giving a nominal 1%, just for a comparison sake. So, for, for the month of April, that 1% was $395,000. And for the rolling 12 months, we are, let me find this number, we're relatively flat on our collections. We're, we're about half a percent below the prior year. See if there's anything else that would need to be pointed out. Any questions from council on the financials and my poor review of those and the sales tax collections? None. Next is item 3B, which is the Durant Sports Festival update, and Mr. Brewer?
Evening, Mayor and council members. Just before the sports festival actually gets started later this month, I thought I'd give you guys a rundown of what's about to hit. Right now, the starting date is going to be May 29th, and it will go up until June 28th. Looking at the anticipated numbers, it's going to make a huge impact to the city. Last year, we had 24 events, 13 different types of activities, eight locations, 15 tournaments, seven camps, clinics, two community events. All this was done by 12 partners, and we had around 8,812 guests and participants. This year, we're anticipating 40 events, 21 different types of events, eight of them being new. It's 12 locations around the city and one just outside the city. It's 27 tournaments, 11 camps, classes or clinics, two community events. We have 21 partners, and we're anticipating 14 to 22,000 people all month participating or as guests. The new events this year that we're including are, we were lucky enough for the Durant Riding Club to be, to join in for their rodeo. The Main Street is doing their Magnolia Festival Fun Run and 5K, or 5K and Fun Run during, for the festival. Where the city is now going to host a golf tournament at Chick's Off Point. The Lions Club is joining in for their car show and bike, bike show on Dragon Main. We're bringing back the Scuba, Discover Scuba, hopefully, and I convinced the vendor to lower their prices where it's at least, it's probably half of what it was last year. We're going to do pickleball, wiffleball, and we are now including buddy ball. It's an inclusive sport, so we're hoping that every kid has at least something to do. It is, their age ranges from one to senior. There's no one in this city or around this area that has, that doesn't have something to do. We're anticipating over around 455 hours of recreation and wellness in the city during that time. And our biggest draw is we actually have, we're lucky enough to get Texoma FC, the professional soccer team out of Sherman-Denison area, to come up and host a camp and a tournament. So, they will have, participants will have a chance to meet professional athletes. The, and on the last weekend during the rugby tournament, we got word that a two-time Olympic gold medalist is actually participating in the tournament this year. We, as a city, we're hosting four events altogether, so it's going to make a pretty big impact as long as weather holds out. That was the biggest hit last year, is it rained for the first half of June. So, hopefully, everything holds out and we can get everything we're anticipating. Questions or anything? Thank you.
It's a big increase. Very much thank you for that work. Okay, next is item administration, item 4A. Consideration, discussion, and possible approval of an acknowledgement of Rick Moat's exceptional service and contributions to the city of Durant through a special dedication.
It's me again. So, Rick, do you want to join me up here? While he's on his way, I'm going to go ahead and start reading this statement. I would like to take a moment of today's council meeting to recognize and honor Rick Moat, who has, for his incredible 47 years of dedicated service to the city of Durant by sharing more, sharing more about his career and contributions. Rick began his work at the age of 20 as a temporary worker, and within six months transitioned to a full-time employee with the Parks and Rec Department, and since has been here. Throughout his career, he had two major responsibilities, shaping and maintaining ball fields for 20 years, and later became mowing all the rightaways, easements, and floodplains for the remainder of his career. And in his off time, during the off season, he shaped and built ball fields. So, he literally and figuratively helped build the Parks and Rec Department and for several generations and generations to come. Rick Moat actually played a key role in holding the first tournament at the complex in 2008, maintaining, shaping, and bringing those fields up to standards. He loves everything that he's done. He's put in so much work, and I've only had four years of working with him, but I knew he was a, he was my one employee at that, from the get-go, that there was no questioning if whether or not he was doing a good job. He would come in every day and tell, ask me where he needed to hit next, and I would say, "Where do you think?" And he goes, "Oh, right here." And then he would go about it. So, it's, as of April 30th, he fully retired, and I can't, it's hard to imagine the Parks Department without him. So, in recognition of Rick's contributions, unspeakable to him, I would like to propose naming the baseball hub at the Durant Multi-Sports Complex, the Rick Moat Legacy Baseball Diamonds. This space is home to four baseball fields representing the heart of Rick's early work within the city, and he took pride in shaping and maintaining fields for the community. Naming the hub in his honor is a meaningful way to ensure the future generations understanding, to understand and appreciate the legacy Rick has built throughout his nearly five decades of dedication, hard work, and service to the city of Durant. Questions?
Question? I make a motion that we approve the dedication of those baseball fields to the, named the Rick Moat Legacy Baseball Diamonds in honor of Rick and his 47 years of exceptional service and contributions to the city of Durant.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Shear?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simuleski?
Yes.
Mayor Tucker?
Yes. And would the council please join me down front for a quick presentation?
I know. I purposely made that a point of mine.
It was hard to read.
Yeah.
I know you're feeling ambushed, but we want to give you this from the city. With all the signatures and comments and well wishes on it, and we appreciate you very much. Thank you, Rick. And you can make all the speeches you want now.
Well, I've had allergy trouble, so I don't even know whether I can talk right or not. Thank everybody that had anything to do with that, and I didn't know nothing about the ballpark being named after me. I still don't know what to think about that. But anyway, I guess I made 47 years, but I didn't do it by myself. It took help and support from the coworkers and the bosses. Then there was family and friends on the outside of the job that I couldn't have made it without. And as far as I know, 47 years is probably longer than anybody ever worked for Durant. And I'm the last active employee that worked out of the first original old city yard. It used to be on South Fifth there where that driver's license building is. And wasn't very big, if that's what it was. I worked there the first year and a half or so, starting out, and then we moved down to where we're at now. So, thank everybody. Thank God. I guess that's about all I know, so. Anyway, thank y'all.
Rick's family, do you want to come up for a picture? Your friends?
Funny. It's funny.
Anyway, the stuff those kids have got, it's too good. All right, that's awesome. I don't know that anyone's going to touch that record anytime soon, but you know, the challenge has been made, I suppose. All right, next is item, under administration is item 4B, and this is the U.S. Department of Transportation 2025 Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant Program Funding Request to Develop a Comprehensive Safety Action Plan to Identify Roadway and Safety Deficiencies. I don't know that I'm going to read this whole thing, but the part, there are three parts to this. We'll begin with the first part, Discussion, Consideration, and Possible Action to Consider Approval in Support of a 2025 Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant Application for Funding to Develop a Comprehensive Safety Action Plan. I'll let you talk through that piece.
This is something we've approved over the last couple of years, and the application hasn't gotten through. In order for us to qualify for future USD, USDOT funding, you have to have this safety action plan in place first, and it has to be within the last five years. And so, I'm, this is kind of housekeeping. I'm just coming again, asking for the same amount. Nothing has changed. But in order to submit the application, you have to have that brought before city council and a revised resolution for the matching funds to submit the application.
So, what is the amount?
So, the total amount is $255,150, and it's a 20% match commitment for $51,030.
Okay. And so, that's basically the item one and the two. The item two is the supporting the action plan and approving the match, right?
Correct.
Okay. And then item three would be authorization for signing the application documents.
Correct.
Right?
Yes.
So, I don't know that those are going to require three separate motions, I don't believe, all under item B. Any comments or questions from the city council?
I think we've, we've talked about this over the last year or so. It's just, we need this plan to get access to more money and matching grants and stuff like that. So, hopefully, we'll get it done this time.
Any other comments, question?
Oh, I have a question. How long does it take till they get the study done?
I'm sorry?
How long does it take to get the study done? Or the safety plan or whatever?
It should be within less than 12 months.
Okay.
But I'm hoping that as long as there's funding next year, then we can apply for a project that's greatly needed and get funding for that.
Okay.
Right.
So, but this is the first step to that.
You have to have this to get in the?
Yeah.
Yes.
Consideration.
So, less than 12 months. That's what I was curious about.
Okay.
I don't have anything else.
No other comments, questions? Okay, do I hear a motion then?
I make the motion we approve of item 4B, Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant Program.
And that's going to be for one, two, and three, right?
Yes.
Okay, the whole. We have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 4B, all-inclusive. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Shear?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simuleski?
Yes.
Mayor Tucker?
Yes. Next is item 4C, Consider Award bid for 2025 street improvement project, and that's Mr. Hightower.
Good evening, Mayor. We went out for bids on 4.7 miles of streets to be milled and overlaid, and some curb work to be repaired. We had three bidders, the lowest bid coming in at $1.4 million. And just like the, uh, award of contract to Drake Paving. They're, they came in the lowest bid.
Okay, and for, for council members, I believe you, you produced a map as well?
Yes, sir. There's a map with it.
And there's already a list.
There's 17 streets.
There's a list of the streets that are included in this contract, and so, there's an approximate distance in here as well.
Yes, sir.
Running feet. So, that kind of encompasses the scope of work without reading the whole document here tonight. Comments or questions of Mr. Hightower on this award of bid to Drake, Drake Paving?
Are they, have they had the previous two years' contracts?
Yes, they've, they've, well, it was J&amp;L paving then. They've been, J&amp;L paving was bought out by Drake.
You've been happy with their work?
Yes, sir. They've, they've done good, good work. Go ahead.
The bid specifications are kind of vague.
Yes, sir. Yes, uh, but they're also, if you look in the, in the bid document, they have to go by city ordinances, and they go by ODOT specifications, which in turn, that means all level and surfaces. And in the bid project itself, it says that any place where water would be pooling, it would have to be fixed so it wouldn't be pooled.
A little bit like the edge.
Yes.
The edge, edge cutting, beveling, and everything?
Yes.
Against the curb?
Yes. Jackson Little with Drake is here if you want to ask questions of the contractor.
No, just, I mean, I'm just.
Yeah, yes. The, it will be go, it will be even with the pan of the curb and gutter.
What's the timeline for this project? When is it all anticipate starting and finishing?
June.
I mean, there's multiple projects, it's not just one.
Right. He anticipates to mobilize first of June and be done in how long?
I think if I start in June, I finish in June. Weather's in.
Okay.
Years passed with this crew, they've kind of came and gone and got the work done, and it was kind of a low impact on the rest of us, and we, we appreciate that in comparison to some other projects that we've had to get through, right?
Yes, sir.
So, so we very much appreciate that.
So, have you been with the company the last two years? I think.
Yes, sir. I've been with the company since 2018, done these three projects here in 2020, 2021, 2023, 2024, I think. I think every, everything I've done in Durant has been, has been, in my career.
Any other comments or questions? While we have all the parties to the process here. Hearing none, I make a motion that we award the bid for the Twenty-Twenty-Five Improvement Project, Street Improvement Project to Drake Paving.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, which is item four C one, to award the bid to Drake Paving. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Shear?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simulescu?
Yes.
Mayor Tucker?
Yes, next is item four C two, which is to consider approval of a contract between the City of Durant and Drake Paving For this Twenty-Twenty-Five Street Improvement Project, and the dollar amount Mr. Hightower just gave, it's almost one-point-five million dollars. I have a, in your packet, there is a sample contract, and it is C Twenty-Twenty-Five dash fifteen. Has our council reviewed this contract?
I, I have, Mr. Mayor, and it, it's consistent with previous contracts and like contracts we've done before.
Any comments or questions on the contract, that's before the city? Hearing none, I make a motion that we approve the contract between the City of Durant and Drake Paving for the Twenty-Twenty-Five Street Improvement Project.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item four C two. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Shear?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simulescu?
Yes.
Mayor Tucker?
Yes, and thank you very much, Phillip, thank you. Next is item four D, which is Consider Approval of a Health, Employee Health and Dental Benefit With Blue Cross Blue Shield Vision Benefit with VSP, a group life, accidental death and dismemberment, and dependent life with Symmetra Renewals, or take any other appropriate action.
Uh, yes, so these are just renewals, this is the same, all of the same policies we had last year, it's just rolling this year. Um, the employee health benefits renewed with Blue Cross Blue Shield for the Twenty-Five, Twenty-Six Plan Year reflects a six percent increase With a one-time one-hundred-and-seventy-one-thousand, five-hundred-dollar communication credit for the city's premium for medical benefits, and then a five-point-four percent increase of the city's premium for dental benefits. Um, the employee paid vision benefits through VSP have no change, they're just a pass this year, and the city paid Symmetra is also a pass, no change.
So I won't ask you very many questions because I can tell you're struggling to talk, but what is that communication credit? That's a new, that's a new term on me.
So, this year we went out for bid on the, or not bid, but we, uh,
RFI, right?
Yes, um, and when Blue Cross Blue Shield found out that we were shopping, they wanted to keep us as customers because we've been with them for so long.
Funny how that works.
Yeah, so we have a six percent increase, but basically what they did is they took that
They just marked it back down?
And they're going to give us a credit on our August bill.
That's great. So basically, it's flat, it's completely flat?
Yep.
Compared to last year?
Mm-hmm.
And the, the coverages are, are the same as well?
All the same, yes.
Okay, so that's straightforward. Comments or questions from the council on this? This is for the staff, for the employees. No comments, no questions? I'm not going to ask her any more questions.
I can answer questions.
So, I make a motion that we approve item four D, which is the renewal of the health, dental, and vision benefits With the life coverage as well, independent life, as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item four D, which is the, the benefits coverage for, for staff. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Shear?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simulescu?
Yes.
Mayor Tucker?
Yes, next is item four E, which is Consideration and Possible Approval of Phase One Preliminary Plat Request for Property Located Near South Twenty-Second Avenue and West Mississippi in Durant, Oklahoma, And there's about a page and a half of meets and bounds legal description, which I'm not going to read. Here, Mr. Cotrell, would you present?
Curious if he's going to give that a run or not?
Nope.
Um, good evening, everyone. Uh, this is a request for a replat for phase one only. Um, this is a plat that you've all seen in the last few months. It came in sometime ago on a much larger scale at that time. Um, the applicant then came to me with some concerns on completing the project as a whole Uh, with infrastructure and everything, and asked if he could do it in phases. I told him in order to do it in phases, he would have to restart the process and platted in phases. Um, at that point, he submitted for a phase one of approximately three phases that will contain a hundred-and-twenty-eight lots Once it's fully completed with phase one consisting of forty-four lots. Um, there was a portion of the subdivision moved up toward the north because it was currently sitting in flood zone that was missed the first time around. Um, after planning commission, they recommended the approval of the replat with the conditional understanding That at some point in the process, there will have to be an environmental water, water study to show it being distributed To the right of way before the plat is completed.
I have a question about that right there. What does that mean to the right of way?
I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Okay, I'm glad I'm not the only one, but now, the obvious, uh, here, if you're seeing that screen, go back to that picture, please. You see that dark green that's below the platted area, that's mineral bayou, that's a creek, so obviously that's where the water's going. Is that the right of way they're talking about?
I'm not sure if I had to guess. I mean, once, typically, once everything goes through preliminary to final, then when they submit for a building permits, They submit civil plan review, stormwater drainage, et cetera.
Okay.
And that's when we'll typically see what their plan is for water diversion. I think the major concern here, although I don't understand fully what they were asking, With, with South Twenty-Second, and Phillip can attest to this, there is a ton of water drainage that runs through there,
Already?
And typically floods each business to the south as it goes down, and I think that was the major concern.
And the more things that get built along that downslope, the worse the, the flooding.
Correct, I think planning commission would just want to see an environmental study done to see what they will do with that excess water that's going to flow into the property.
So especially if you look, now, now scroll up to the plat, if you would, no, down, I'm sorry, down to the, a little bit more. If you look right in the crook of that bend at the bottom right-hand corner where that lot corners, that first street on the east side, Right there seems like where it's going to go, a lot of it.
And that's where I'm actually recommending before final plat that we do storm drainage and retention upon, so.
Okay, uh, definitely need some mitigation of stormwater, need a hydrology study, uh, to do stormwater management. Again, just because of where this property is, and everybody knows.
And with all those lines you see right to the south, that's all flood zone, so it's sitting pretty close to what's already going to be considered.
Kind of at the bottom of a long hill getting to the creek where you're going to get all the, so that would be my only concern there Is that stormwater management plan, which I think, I agree with you, that needs to be done.
Mr. Mayor, I, I just have a question from a perspective of, of order of operations. Typically, and I may be wrong in this, but typically when there's preliminary plat, they come back and they do infrastructure, Then they, then before they get building permits, there's a final plat. If, if the council approves this preliminary plat, and, and they get a blade out there tomorrow and start scraping for streets, And then they get all their streets done and their infrastructure done, and then do their hydrology study or their water study, is it too late? I mean, I That was actually something, that's a really good question, and we were discussing that in my office today. It's kind of a catch-22 where you don't want to make them get all these studies done and cost a developer X amount of money, And then something get denied, and now they're already at thousands of dollars on studies that they wouldn't have needed otherwise without a final, um, acceptance. But on the, on the other side of that, like you're saying, we could go out there and do an environmental impact study right now, and then Once he removes all that topsoil, you're talking about a whole nother set of problems that's going to arise with the flooding.
Yeah.
So it is kind of a, it's, it's an area that needs debated and a plan come up with. Um, I just don't have the best approach on that right now, but you are correct. It, it's kind of something that we would, I would like to see beforehand, before we even made it to preliminary, that would be attached with the preliminary plat, but.
Other comments, questions?
Does this go with our future land use map?
It currently does not when it was rezoned, because when we came in for that original replat, it was rezoned as well. Um, at that time, it was owned agriculture, and I believe Future Land Use showed it as R-two, um, and he applied for an R-three rezone. There was some debate on whether we should approve that or not, given that I think the only outcome was be to get smaller lots and more houses per, per acre in there. But current, current future land use was showing, or no, future land use was R-three, so it did go in line with that, I think, But there was a push that we didn't need to go that route, is what it was. So, so currently, yes, it is, currently zoned with the future land use, so, I'm sorry about that. And that's in my notes.
And a preliminary plat will really only, uh, cover phase one at this point. I mean, it shows the other phases, but there would only be work done primarily on phase one.
Correct, I asked the applicant to include the, all the phases so that we didn't get into a, a roadblock down the road. We can make sure it be plausible as we go, so.
Phillip, I might have a question for you. All of our infrastructure in that area, support that?
I guess, one more question, if, is there, Is there anything about phase two that, that goes along with this, or is phase two kind of a separate deal? Because it looks like Mississippi would have to be extended west. Would that be, would that be the developer's responsibility? Correct, yeah, what he, what he intends to do is Mississippi will extend all the way over almost to phase three there by the time he's completed the project. Danny, did you have a?
Well, it just seems, I mean, we, we know there's going to be issues, water issues there, and
I'm, I'm of the opinion that that stormwater management plan should come before, the, the approval should come contingent on a good stormwater management plan Before we get too far down the road. Any other comments or concern?
What did the Planning and Zoning say, didn't they kind of say the same thing?
I think in a roundabout way, um, I think that's what they were essentially getting at.
They said environmental study or whatever, so not quite.
I'm not worried about environmental studies, I own up the stormwater.
Right, I understand, no, but that's kind of what, I assume that's what they were thinking perhaps, potentially. But yeah, I agree, I feel like you need to do the studies, there's problems, then you come back and you cut a bunch of streets, and you're like, hey, well, I can't do it now, what are we going to do?
And it might be that if the retainerage is required, then that's, you know, that's probably going to modify the plat because it has to go somewhere, right?
Correct.
So then, you know, let's just get it right the first time if we can, or that's my, that's my thought. Open to other thoughts.
And I know I have spoke with the applicant here, right after the, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission, And he was open to get a study done to attach to the final plat.
Uh, to me, it's almost insurance upfront that this is actually going to be doable without going too far.
That's what I, I told him that it would actually benefit him in the long run more than it's benefitting the city.
I think so.
What, what did the Planning and Zoning Committee recommend, or?
They recommended approval of the replat. Bear with me here, I might screw a few of these words up. With the conditional understanding that at some point in the process, there will have to be an environmental water study To show it being distributed to the right of way before the plat is finished.
And so, my two concerns is that at some point in the process, might be after they spent a lot of money, right?
Yeah, right.
My, my other concern, if you go back to this plat, and, and right here in the, on the street, in, in capital letters, it says right of way. Is that what they're just dumping the water in the street? Because that's not going to fix anything.
No.
It has, it has to go into mineral bayou, right?
Correct.
So, I'm, again, I'm, I want to, I want to try to be as clear as we can on this. I think they need a stormwater management plan that's going to move that stormwater into the creek.
Correct, because that's the only time the issue's going to arises during a storm with heavy rain is when, is the only time we're going to get that issue.
Right, that's the concern. That's the concern. Any comments or, or questions about that?
No, that makes sense. How big are these homes that he's building there?
Um, I'm not sure.
I was just curious, because I feel like we talked about this like months ago, but I just don't remember.
We did.
Because it's been a, it's been a while, it's been a minute.
I think they're going to be anywhere between probably fifteen-hundred to two-thousand or a little over, but, but I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Oh, that's fine, I was just curious, I remember we had this debate last time, when Lauren was here, she talked about that, so.
Any other comments or questions? Appreciate you helping us, Mr. Cotrell.
I, I did have a question. Did some of these houses that are on the backside here, like next to the bow, aren't, are they not in a floodplain already? Is that not?
Uh, according to our floodplain's management, no, the entire property is, or the entire subdivision is now outside of that.
The, the way that's marked on that survey, that line, that squiggly line that goes along, you see where it's drawn to it that says, here's our hundred-acre floodplain boundary. But it's funny how, it's funny how often we have these hundred-year floods too, so just keep that in mind.
Yeah, I've seen that area underwater before.
More often than a hundred years at a time, right? Right, right. So. Okay, no other questions, no other comments? I would like to then make a motion that we approve the phase one preliminary plat for this property Uh, near South Twenty-Second Avenue and West Mississippi Uh, with the, uh, uh, contingent requirement that we have an approved stormwater management plan for that phase one.
Would that be prior to any construction or grade work?
To me, that makes the most sense, I, I mean, I don't want to speak where the ordinance doesn't, uh, uh, that kind of thing, But to me, that, that seems logical, that seems reasonable to go at it in that, in that sequence of events.
I wasn't trying to put words in your mouth, Mayor, I was just trying to head off them.
I don't want to say things that the ordinance don't require, but that would be, that would be my motion. We have a motion and a second to approve, uh, item four E with the addition of the approved stormwater management plan. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Shear?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simulescu?
Yes.
Mayor Tucker?
Yes, and thank you, Mr. Cotrell.
Thank you, everyone.
At, at this time, I would like to pause the City Council meeting and call in to order a meeting of the Durant City Utilities Authority. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Miller?
Here.
Trustee Shear?
Here.
Trustee Fuller is absent. Vice Chairman Simulescu?
Here.
Chairman Tucker?
Here. Uh, we have a quorum, uh, under, there's only one item tonight for consideration, it's a consent item, and it's Consider, uh, approval of regular meeting minutes of the April eighth, uh, meeting of the City Utilities Authority, At, at which time we approved, uh, uh, the purchase of a pump and motor, uh, for about a hundred-and-eighty-four-thousand, five-hundred dollars. There were no other items during that meeting. Do I hear, uh, questions or comments? I move that we approve the consent items on the City Utilities Authority.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda item, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Shear?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Simulescu?
Yes.
Chairman Tucker?
Yes, there are no other items to be brought before the Utilities Authority. Tonight, I move for adjournment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the Durant City Utilities Authority meeting. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Shear?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Simulescu?
Yes.
Chairman Tucker?
Yes, we stand adjourned. At this time, I would like to call to order a meeting of the Durant Airport Authority. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Miller?
Here.
Trustee Shear?
Here.
Trustee Fuller is absent. Vice Chairman Simulescu?
Here.
Chairman Tucker?
Here, there is one item under consideration tonight for the Airport Authority, and it is to consider The meeting minutes of the regular meeting held on April the eighth. It, during that meeting, we approved the meeting minutes of the prior meeting. And that's the only thing contained, contained in those meeting minutes, and I would move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda items. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Shear?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Simulescu?
Yes.
Chairman Tucker?
Yes, we stand adjourned. At this time, uh, back in, in regular session for the Durant, uh, City Council, we have no other items on the agenda for tonight's meeting, and there is no new business. Uh, so, do I hear a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the Durant City Council meeting. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Shear?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simulescu?
Yes.
Mayor Tucker?
Yes, we stand adjourned. Thank you all very much.